Do you want to tell the audience, once we're on camera, about the...
Well, we are on camera right now. So I want to welcome you all to the January 24th meeting of the Planning Policy Commission. I apologize that there's not more people up here. We are expecting one more. I don't want you to feel slighted because you're going to get your information out there and we'll be able to discuss it. And the people that aren't here are going to have to listen to your explanation. So we're going to come to a conclusion. This is one of those things that it's better to get it right before it goes into code than getting it done tomorrow. So, you know, it's going to be there on public television for the community to hear and for us to debate after a while. So please don't feel like we're, you know, that because there's only two people up here right now that for some reason that's not enough to give you and your ideas a balance from what the city wants to do. So what we're going to do tonight is talk about codes for wireless communication. And first up is our illustrious leader, Keith Niven. So if you want to, please, give us some updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good evening. Keith Niven, Director of Development Services and Economic Development Departments. So this evening, as you mentioned, we do not have a quorum. So tonight, we're going to open the public hearing. And we're going to leave it open and continue it to potentially February 1st, subject to getting a commission quorum on that evening. So I'm not going to spend too much time going through this because frankly, I'm not the subject matter expert. Those are those folks in the audience. I'm going to give you a quick introduction to what we're doing, tell you why. And then I figured we would allow public comment. And then afterwards, we would start to talk through some of the policy questions that are associated with this proposed code amendment. How does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So wireless communication facilities, small cell. So I figured, let's go through the five Ws, right? You know, who's, who are we talking about? We're really talking about all of the carriers. And if I've left somebody out, my apologies, wasn't unintentionally. So Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Sprint, Comcast, and there may be others coming along. So what is this? Small cell, it's also called distributed antenna systems. And for the most part, in an area that already has coverage and that I think is our city, I can't remember the last time I had a call drop. It's really about adding capacity. And so this is a much finer grain antenna network that provides more capacity to the carriers because of the increasing demand that we are all putting on them. And because our original section of city code, 1807-505, was written for the first wave of wireless communication facilities, which were all macro towers, we needed to go back in and redo. And so what is being considered this evening is a replacement set of regulations. So we're basically suggesting taking out the existing 505 and replacing it with a new 505, which addresses both small cell and macro towers. When? This is a hard one. So this, kind of this wave that's coming our direction really kind of was on the horizon a few years ago. And as it has built up momentum, there are applications that are, there's one that is being issued without these codes in place to Verizon for Isicuahtl Falls City Road, Isicuahtl Pine Lake Road. It's their first deployment ask. It will be followed by additional deployment asks. The other carriers, AT&amp;T, had approached for a permit. My understanding is that has been withdrawn, is being reconsidered, but will come back. To my knowledge, we have not heard from Sprint or T-Mobile yet, but that will come. So it's coming. And like any other thing that's coming, if you get in before the regulations are in place, you have to comply with the regulations that are on the books at that time. So there's a little bit of sense of urgency because if we get these done before the applications come in and are vested, then they will apply to those applications when they come in. So that's just for you to keep in the back of your mind. So why? As I mentioned earlier, 505 was created for macro cell facilities and small cell because they have a different level of frequency and a different height level that those antennas want to be at than the macro antennas. They just have different requirements. They can fit into a lot of different places, whereas the big towers, they had very few locations that they actually could go in. So where, where will they apply? So this code applies citywide. And really, what we're talking about is there's really kind of three different areas. There's the public right of way. So that's basically between, you know, that's sidewalk streets, planter strips, up to building edges where we have no setbacks. Private property, so you could end up with antennas being mounted to the sides of buildings or put on rooftops of buildings. And then there's public property. And public property could be in a park. It could be on the side of a water reservoir or something like that. So really, we're talking about all of this. And these facilities really could go in any of those places, depending on what your code So what are these things? They look like this. They come in different shapes and sizes. So these down here, these were poles, as far as I can tell, that were just erected for small cell. They don't seem like they have anything else going on other than the antenna. Here's kind of your typical Cobra head light fixture with an antenna up on them. And so the, and here's an extension. So in this case, the antenna wanted to be taller than the top of the pole. So it's up here in an extension. So there, the, the facilities are kind of a combination of the antenna and some electrical equipment that goes with it. Sometimes that electrical equipment is pole-mounted and sometimes it's ground-mounted. And we have some different application requirements depending on if it's on the pole or if it's on the ground. And part of the conversation that we're going to have later when we start talking about the policies is, you know, where can they go? And as you can see, we have a lot of different light standards in town. I actually wasn't going to put the labels on to see if you guys could guess where they all were. But then I thought that could take all night, so I went ahead and labeled them. So, you know, we have everything from, you know, custom fixtures in Old Town and the Highlands and Talis and Gilman to what you'd consider a more rustic approach. So this is squawk. You know, it's a combination light fixture and power pole, you know, as is this in Old Town. And these poles are owned by PSE. And so at some point, we're going to talk about city-owned poles. These are not city-owned poles. These are actually not city-owned poles either. The decorative ones in the villages are owned by either PSE or by the community associations. So we'll talk about all that. That's probably some of the biggest conversation points we're going to have is about whether or not we think putting antennas on our decorative poles or on city-owned poles is the right thing to do or not. Those are some of the things we can address specifically in the regulations. And then I got one more slide, and it's really to kind of start to talk about the policies. And we can really either start on this now or we can defer this, open it up for public testimony, and then come back to the policy conversation after. Your choice, Madam Chair.
I think we're going to open up the public comment. But I have a question for you before we start. What was presented to us for the city's possible language for the new codes? I understand that every city is developing some of this stuff. Did you collaborate with any other cities or was this your own thought process behind it?
I'm not that smart, Joan. So what I would tell you is, I looked at a number of, so Ogden Murphy Wallace is the city attorney. They provided us some legal direction, but they also provided us some sample codes from some of the other cities that they work for. But what I found was actually, some of the codes I liked better were from Texas. So our code is actually, if you were trying to find cousins, Redmond and San Antonio are kind of the main codes that I, that resonated with me personally. So that's, that's how I would answer that question is, this is from other places. So I looked at San Antonio and El Paso and San Francisco and Berkeley and Redmond and Renton and Polsbo and, 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 and. So this is what I would consider the most applicable to Isicuahtl. So part of it is, you know, every city has different preferences for aesthetics and process and notification and everything else. And so what I did was looking at all those other codes, then bring in the pieces that I thought made the most sense for our community.
Well, no, that, I appreciate that. I think that's the way you should go. For all these other cities, have they already voted on, accepted their codes? Or are they still in the process of making it up?
So I'm, I will answer one way, but I will definitely invite the audience to provide maybe a better answer. My take on it, based on what I saw from kind of looking through other codes, is Pacific Northwest seems to be semi-behind. So Texas, Pennsylvania, California, all those codes are older and have been adopted and been in place. The codes in cities in Washington are either seem to be in process now or recently adopted. So ours seem to be much newer and later, and maybe that's just a function of being in the corner of the country. I don't know.
Well, this is, we're preparing for the future. So old code's not necessarily what we need for the future. So we're going to hear some tonight of what other, what their process are, what they need, and how they would change the city-established possibility for codes. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 6:49. And ask if there's anybody else, anybody in the audience that would like to make a Or we can go to Linda Atkins.
I'm going to let Rich go first.
Your name is on here. You have to go.
She's assigned her rights, I guess. Good evening. My name is Richard Bush from the Wireless Policy Group here, talking on behalf of Verizon tonight. We did supply a letter earlier today that I believe has been distributed. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to address this slide that's on the screen. If the city is starting from the expectation that small cell and DAS are the same, that's probably exhibit number one for why we need to talk. Small cell and DAS are not the same. And if the city starts with that presumption that small cell and DAS infrastructure is the same, we need to clarify the difference between the two. And it does have an impact on the size of the facilities, the location of where the facilities go, and the amount of additional network equipment that needs to be installed around town. Okay? So thank you for leaving this up. And to give you an example, which one was it? If you go in the upper left, the second slide to the right, the first landscape slide at the top, you see a rather large white box that has wires going up to the top of the pole and three large antennas mounted, standing off of the pole, probably six to eight inches, 10 inches off the pole. Just looking at the size of the equipment, that looks more like a macro site or perhaps a DAS, a piece of DAS equipment. But the small cell equipment is smaller than that. And if we had time to prepare exhibits to show you what is being considered for installation here, we would have brought that to show what the profile looks like. These days, you can have strand-mounted small cells. Strand-mounted small cells are boxes that hang on the copper or the fiber strand overhead, and they look exactly like the spice boxes that you see today on the telephone cables or the cable TV cables that you see around town today. You have equipment boxes that are 12 inches wide, four feet tall, seven inches deep, fits the profile of the existing utility pole. And then the antennas that go at the top or on the side of the pole or inside of the pole are approximately 10 to 12 inches wide, two feet tall, and six to eight inches deep. They need to be mounted to the pole. If it's external, they could be put inside the pole. If it's internal, and if you look at the picture below, the one I just talked about, that's a good example of what's likely a small cell. The antennas are encased inside of that slightly larger shroud at the top of the pole above the lumiere. So that's a good example of a small cell. So why are we here talking about this? First, we totally agree with the city. It's the, this is the right time to revise the code in order to accommodate the coming small cells that Verizon is bringing as well as others. But we caution you against rushing to a conclusion just to beat a schedule without getting input from the industry. We received the draft ordinance late last week, and we had a chance to comment it on and get letters in earlier, earlier this week or today. And what we really appreciate is when we can have a dialogue with staff and a dialogue with the planning commission in order to come up with language that works for everybody. The concern we have is that the growth in the usage of wireless facilities is increasing astronomically. It's coming from everybody using it not only for phone calls but accessing the internet traffic and so on. What's happening is because of all of the taller towers that are in town, the macro sites as you referred to, they are serving all of the users increased data usage as well as the traffic. Verizon came in and applied for some of the small cells up on the Spanish Plateau at the top when you get up to the intersection of Highland and Isicuahtl Falls City Road, Isicuahtl Pine Lake Road. If you've ever been up there, anytime between four and seven at night where I live, it's gridlocked. And the existing macro cells cannot accommodate the demand of the residential users out there as well as the commuting public. So what happens is the small cells are not designed to put coverage where none exists today. Small cells are primarily designed to provide additional capacity to the people who are very close to the small cell and offload the taller towers to accommodate the people who are further away. There's a finite amount of radio frequency available to each carrier. And as soon as you load up as many frequencies as you can to the macro sites, they're out of capacity. They can provide no additional service without another macro cell. And if it's too close, it doesn't work very well. Or now they have the small cells that are much lower elevation like on traffic pole streetlights. So the difference between DAS, which is intended to cover a larger geographic area, and a small cell, which is intended to cover a smaller geographic area, is how far does this radio need to propagate in order to serve the people? If you look at the Verizon drawings, I don't know that that was made available to the planning folks, the Verizon application for the franchise. They identified some roads, some locations along Isicuahtl Pine Lake and Isicuahtl Falls City Road. There are probably 12 within three blocks of that intersection at the top of the hill. That's high density, meaning you don't have one per mile or two. You have one every two blocks, one every one block. And it's designed to accommodate the people who are relatively close. As a result, the antennas are smaller, the equipment boxes are smaller, there's fewer radios, the power output is smaller. So that's why when you take a look at the top of the landscape pictures, those antennas are larger, higher power, designed to cover bigger geographic area. So when we start talking about putting these small cells on Gilman, on Front Street, they won't look anything like this. They will be a design that's custom for, that fits within the area that they're intended to serve, and it also fits within the design for the community. So when you take a look at the draft code, it prohibits any small cells, or macro cells for that matter, from Gilman and Front. But guess what? That's where you need it the most. Usually, how, I don't, traffic is very heavy on Front Street. We all know that. It's been a problem for years. I've been here since 1986, and the traffic on Front Street is a long-standing problem. Gilman is less dense, the traffic backup is less there, but the demand is still high. If there's no facilities allowed on Front or Gilman to offload that traffic, the quality of service will be poor. I don't know if you are aware, but with the new iPhone operating system, there's a new feature. And it's not only Facebook, it's not people using it for traffic. I can push and hold two buttons right now, and my phone will emit a siren. And if I don't silence it within five seconds, it will call the police and tell them where I am. In order to have that kind of functionality available to people in the community, you can't rely solely on the macro sites that are maxed out by traffic that's backed up. You have to have offload capacity on the, on these streets in order to receive that signal and transmit it to whomever needs to get it. So what we look forward to is working with staff to come up with something that works for everybody, taking into consideration the design considerations that you must take into consideration, and work with us, we can come up with designs that are acceptable. The challenge with small cells not being allowed on Front and Gilman, you can't put them on the next street over and expect them to work because the way radio frequencies behave in these bands, it, they transmit straight and they don't penetrate through several walls of buildings. So if we wanted to put them in a park or in the, in the parking area behind the restaurants along Front Street and expect them to propagate through to get the traffic on Front Street, that's not going to happen. The signals would be blocked by the buildings on Front Street. Same thing if you go behind on the other side toward the river, the Isicuahtl Creek. The signals will be blocked by the buildings coming back toward Front Street. So if the expectation of the city is that we can just put them on another street and they will get to the, the traffic that's backed up on Front Street, that's not going to happen. So if we adopt the code as it exists today, basically, we're saying that we're not going to have acceptable quality of service to Front Street or Gilman for the foreseeable future. So that's of a concern to us. So we are asking for a variety of things in the letter that we sent on behalf of Verizon. We do want to have the ability to put in replacement poles that are designed in an aesthetically pleasing way, they fit within the community. That, that is not in the code today. The city is requiring us to prove that a variety of antenna or site installations don't, would do or do not work. That's prohibited by federal law. We provided a citation to the case on that. And to answer the question about Redmond, and I mean, look at my colleagues, I believe Redmond is not final. They're still going through the process in Redmond. That's not, that hasn't been adopted yet. So we're glad to answer any questions that you may have at this point in time, but our request is that you not rush into adopt something because of a, a sense of urgency to get something adopted. It needs to be done right the first time.
So what, how many boxes do you expect to put from Gilman, down the length of Gilman? How many would make...
I don't think it's, I don't think it's been designed yet, but based upon what we've, let's just go based upon what we've seen.
Example.
What we've seen on the plateau. They will put a node every two blocks, let's say, plus or minus. And the node will consist of small antennas at the top of a pole and a small box on the pole at the base. The designs can vary. Like you said, they can go underground, they can go in the, they can go on the surface, they can go underground, but there's problems with water and electronics around here. They can be built into the base of a pole. So you don't even see the equipment. It looks like it's a decorative pole with a slightly larger base than the other poles.
I understand that. I was just trying to get a...
Like I said, every two blocks. Roughly every two blocks. But it'll vary by carrier, it'll vary by design.
I have a question.
Please.
So one thing you said was that they, there would not be this technology for the foreseeable future. My understanding is that this would be a small-scale deployment. But then, I think this is a fast-changing technology, and there will be opportunities in the future. So I'm, I'm wondering why, if we start with a certain plan in certain locations, why you're saying that for the foreseeable future, we wouldn't be able to add more? It seems like over time, there will be new technology, probably smaller, smaller small cells and these sorts of things. And I would think that over time, you might expand. But I was just curious about why you made that particular statement.
I'd like to clarify what I said. I didn't say the technology wouldn't be available. If the technology is prohibited from Front Street, then the service will not be available in a high-quality fashion because the, the small cell antennas would, would need to be installed elsewhere. And if they're behind a building, or like if they're over by City Hall trying to get over to Front Street, the signals will not penetrate all of the buildings, jacks, the pizza place over here, the signals just will not reach Front Street. And if the code doesn't change, it's not that the technology won't change, the technology will change. It's the scientific behavioral characteristics of radio frequencies in these frequency bands, 700, 800, 1900, 2100, they won't penetrate those buildings and get over there. That's not going to change. So if the code doesn't change prohibiting small cells on Front Street, the technology, the frequency behavior is not going to change as a scientific fact. It doesn't bounce off the clouds and come back down, doesn't curve around corners, doesn't curve over the roof. It gets blocked, so there wouldn't be the improved coverage there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt? Oh, go for it.
I'm Linda Atkins. I'm an attorney with Davis Wright Tremaine, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of T-Mobile. My colleague, Matt Russo, has some photographs that he would like to pass out to the council members, if that's acceptable. Sure. So I, I let my colleague in the wireless industry, Rich Bush, go first because I knew he would give a really good overview of the issue and the general technological issues that are driving the need for improved coverage in all communities, in small cells specifically. Every, every carrier, every wireless carrier has their own licensed frequencies, and those frequencies drive network design. So each carrier has a very uniquely individually-designed network. And each one of the carriers is going to have their own types of equipment that they're going to use as the small cell technology to deliver the services. And I wanted to make you familiar with the type of small cell that T-Mobile is planning to deploy in this area. I just passed those pictures out, so you can see that it's a compact box. It's, it's a little bit irregular, so it's, if you, if you measured just strictly around the outside, it would be very, very slightly larger than three cubic feet, but it has some indentations in it. So it's, it's a small, compact box, and it incorporates the antennas and the equipment. And if you look at the, the two pictures of the small cell mounted on the light standard with the Cobra head, the, all of the fiber cabling and other cables and wires that would be associated with the site are internal to that pole. So they're coming out of the middle of the back of that box and going into the pole. So we anticipate that there would be very little other appurtenances to the pole. And one of the reasons with going, for going with this design is because it, it can be painted to match any type of pole that you put it on. It can be placed at different heights on the pole. It could potentially be placed behind a banner. There's a lot of different ways that you can deploy this type of small cell on a support structure. And T-Mobile's done that because it really wants to maximize its ability to deploy its facilities in an aesthetically acceptable manner on a full range of opportunities. So as Mr. Bush has already started talking to you, one of the biggest concerns that we have about the current draft is the restrictions on the types of poles that could be used for small cell deployments and the locations where those facilities could be deployed. And I need to speak a little bit to macro facilities as well, since this draft is proposed to replace your code entirely. And it is important to know that the need for macro facilities is not going to completely go away because of small cells, because the, the two types of facilities work together to provide good network service to customers. So the, the macro facility provides coverage... So the, the macro facility provides coverage over a broader geographical area, and the small cell works to help balance the traffic that is going to and from the, the macro facility. So there, there will still be potentially a need for some additional macro facilities in the city of Isqwa. One of the areas I wanted to draw your attention to in the ordinance, so this would be, if you have the comments that T-Mobile submitted in advance of the meeting, this will be on page eight of our comments. So there's a, a chart on page eight that has to do with citing criteria for macro facilities, and the next page is the chart that has to do with criteria for small cell locations. And, and in both cases, as we, we've emphasized in our, our red line of the ordinance and our comment letter, these, particularly the prohibited locations are going to make it extremely difficult to provide the city of Isqwa with the kind of service that your citizens are going to expect. There, there does need to be the ability on major streets to have the small cells because the whole point of a small cell is to make sure that the needs of a lot of people in a dense area for high-quality data are met. And if we can't put small cells on those two major streets, you're basically zoning the technology out of the exact areas where it's most needed. So I would call your attention to the comments that we've submitted specifically on those code sections. And the, I guess the other, the other issue that I wanted to address in the code has to do with access to municipal poles. Right now, the, the code is allowing small cells to be attached to utility poles, so those would be poles operated by PSE. And I understand from the staff presentation that perhaps there are some private decorative poles in some of the neighborhoods, perhaps those could be opportunities. But we will still need to have the ability to cite a small cell potentially on a municipal streetlight, and particularly, that's going to be the case if we're in an area where power's been undergrounded and there are no PSE utility poles, there would only be streetlights. And most other communities that are dealing with this issue right now are going with codes that allow the ability to attach a small cell to a municipal pole, subject to a set of design criteria that are designed to control the aesthetic impacts and make sure that the, you know, the overall look of a community is preserved, particularly where the city has invested time and effort in perhaps a, a uniform decorative look for its street poles. And, and we don't want to interfere with that, we want to be able to, to attach our technology in a way that's compatible with those types of facilities. And then our, the last kind of major topic that we've addressed in our comments has to do with the, the process and the costs for applying for small cell permits. So the, the, the best way to craft a code to address these facilities is to recognize that they, they are going to be deployed in, in groups within an area, and those group of nodes will typically be pretty uniform in terms of the types of structures that we want to attach them to and the way that they're going to look. And they, they're really well-suited to a streamlined process. So for example, other cities are adopting design criteria in their code so that they could actually make an application that meets those design criteria can be a permitted use, so it doesn't require a lot of staff time or a lot of other types of process to get those permits issued. And that, that not only saves the staff a lot of time and effort, but it ensures that as carriers, we are able to get this technology rolled out to your citizens as soon as possible. Because this is, this is the technology that's going to enable the Internet of Things. If you, you know, are, want your, your appliances or your Alexa, whatever your other devices to work, this technology's going to help make that possible. It's going to enable self-driving cars, it's going to do a whole bunch of stuff that we were only dreaming about when I was a kid, watching Star Trek. So I would, I guess, encourage you to examine ways within the draft that you might be able to further streamline the process. And then my last topic has to do with the fees. So the, the fee schedule in the draft is, those fees are quite high, and you have to think about it in terms of, so what, what is the burden going to be on staff, time for processing? And, and we want to be sensitive to the need of a city to make sure that it's, it's not incurring additional costs that aren't covered by the fees. We're totally on board with that. But the point I would make is that this fee schedule may be higher than it needs to be, and if the fees are too high, that in itself is going to act as a disincentive to prioritizing your community when it comes time for T-Mobile to roll out this technology. We don't, we don't have a build schedule for the Pacific Northwest yet, but it's coming very soon. And in terms of, you know, prioritizing the technology, we of course would first look at where are the areas of highest demand, but if we're looking between two areas of high demand, and one has a more reasonable fee schedule and the other has a very high fee schedule, it's just, you know, it's business common sense, we're going to probably go to the community with the lower fee schedule first. So that, that's another topic that, that I would encourage you and the staff to, to look a little more closely at. And I would echo Mr. Bush's comment that we want to work with you, and we, we want to collaborate with you to make sure that you, when you finish this process, you have an ordinance that, that is going to work for at least the next few years. You don't want to be back here in six months with us saying, hey, we need a code amendment because we just can't do what we need to do. So I thank you very much for listening to our comments, and either I or my colleague, Matt Russo, are able to, try to, able to answer your questions.
So everybody wants connectivity. So I know, we all understand that something has to be done. But you talked about each one of the suppliers has their own needs. So are we talking about putting Verizon and AT&amp;T on separate poles, or are they, can we combine them?
They, they, depending on the structural capacity of the pole, they could potentially be combined. For example, like on a, on a wood utility pole, there are instances now where wireless facilities are co-located on those types of poles. It's, you know, it, right now, honestly, I, I think we're all struggling a little bit to answer these types of detailed questions because the, the technology is, is coming, and we know it's coming, but we don't, we don't know all of these details. My, my guess is that because each of the carriers has their own unique network, so right now, if Verizon has a macro site on a monopole in a particular location, that may or may not be a location that T-Mobile could use. If we're looking to build a macro facility and Verizon's pole is something that we can use to fill the gap in our network, we absolutely will want to go and co-locate on that pole. So I, you know, I think that the, the exact locations and the number of small cells that are required are going to be very network-driven. And I, I think for a, a community, the, you know, the, the ways that you can think about addressing concerns about clutter or proliferation, proliferation, excuse me, are, you know, through the design standards, making sure that you've made a range of opportunities available for attachment. So going back again to your charts, prohibiting locating the facilities on municipal poles would reduce the number of opportunities and could wind up actually making a more cluttered city than if you made those structures available. The same with respect to being able to attach to a building. So in a, in a dense downtown area, being able to attach a small cell to a building is a potentially really good solution and one that typically is very aesthetically pleasing. So I probably haven't 100% answered your question, but that's about the best answer I can give at, at this, this time.
50%, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Matt Russo. I work in site development for T-Mobile, and I just kind of want to echo what Linda was saying about small cells and kind of go through the future of the technology and why we would want to deploy small cells in the, in the downtown cores of the various jurisdictions around the area. So if you think about small cells, what the carriers are trying to do is, in the future, when they roll out 5G, and we're talking super-high speeds that we don't currently get on our phones now, so if you think about your phone now, it's about 30 to 40 megabytes per second, which is pretty fast, right? That's, that's what you're getting at home, and, and we're able to deliver that on our cellphone. But when we're talking about super-increased speeds, so you're talking about one gigabyte, and that's instantaneous updates on your phone, that requires a lot more capacity in our network. So this is why we kind of want to roll out these small cells kind of in a staggered pace because we want to prepare for that capacity, those capacity needs for the future of technology. And when you think about it, in the future, we might not even have wired Internet access coming to a building with a router, it might all, it might all be wireless, it could be delivered by the major four carriers. And so small cells will be a vital technology piece of that puzzle to deliver these super-high speeds. So by restricting small cells to areas where, if, if we're not able to deliver the service on Front Street, for, for instance, because small cells deliver service to such small areas, so a couple blocks, for example, that was mentioned earlier, you're not going to be able to deliver the techno, technological advancements to this city that you would if you opened it up to better access for small cells on poles downtown, not just in this city, but any city in this area. So I just kind of wanted to expand on that. Thanks.
So I, I'm asking somebody a question every time. So.
Yeah.
When you do go to 5G.
Yeah.
Are you going to have to redo the box itself, or?
I think, not initially, it will depend, again, on how the technology advances. I would suspect it'll get smaller, but as you, you might know with macro sites, the ones that are on the towers, the antennas, it's been, you know, years now since we've deployed them, and the antennas haven't really gotten too much smaller. We are going to small cells, though, so it, it really depends on the distance you're looking to cover and what frequency that that small cell is operating on. But it's tough to say if it'll get smaller or not.
Oh, I don't know, I, I wasn't concerned that it got smaller, I just thought maybe you would have to redo the inside of the box somehow to add.
It's possible, yeah.
Okay.
But since it's concealed, I don't know how much the public would notice, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
May I ask?
Yeah.
If you have a question.
Go.
So I have a question about these photos that were handed out. Is this one design, or is this, is this one of several designs, or is this exactly what you would get if?
This would be, this is T-Mobile's pole-mounted design. So I think was mentioned, we do have strand-mount designs, but that would be separate from the pole.
Okay, so this, and this design would, the, both of the poles that are shown in the photographs seem very tall, would that be the, the same design used on any pole, even if it was a decorative, shorter pole?
If, it depends, I hate to say that, but if, there's definitely, there'd be room for negotiation if we had to design a small cell site that had to look aesthetically pleasing on a pole, I think it definitely could be done.
Okay. And then I also had a question about, so with the, this gets back to, I think, one of the earlier discussions, but the distributed antenna system, is that, is the difference with that, that multiple carriers can use the same equipment, or is, is it, is that also that each equipment is specific to one carrier?
Each, each carrier would have their own DAS system.
Okay.
Deployed. The DAS is, DAS is utilized more for in-building solutions, so more like a, like a router in your house. Small cell is more for outdoor, just a smaller site than a macro site on a tower.
Okay. And are there any, are there any existing solutions that allow for multiple carriers to use the same equipments rather than co-locating on the same?
It'd be tough because each carrier operates on their own license, and so when you're talking about different frequencies in the technology, it's, you can't, you can't operate within the same equipment based on the frequencies.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
I'm assuming this is Carol.
I'm Carol. Hi, good evening, I'm Carol Tagayan, I'm Director of External Affairs with AT&amp;T, I work in Redmond, I live in Woodinville. So can, you can hear me okay, right? I, I'll try not to repeat too much, since you've had these experts also speaking on our behalf, but a few points that I wanted to bring up. I agree that this is a great time for you to relook at your code, and we're very pleased to participate in this process and appreciate the work that you all are going to put into this and that staff is going to put into it. As you know, wireless technology is very much ingrained in, in our consumer behavior these days. For Washington State, if, in case you didn't know, almost 50% of households are wireless-only, and over nearly 70% of all 911 calls come from wireless service. So that's why it's really important that we have good cellular coverage in, in all the areas where people try to use their phones, homes, office, down to everywhere. Since 2007, AT&amp;T has experienced a 250,000%, 250,000% increase in data usage on the AT&amp;T network. And that's basically since the advent of the iPhone and all the many applications and OS service and Android, all these things happened in 2007. So since then, we have this, just this huge increase. And I think someone asked earlier, well, is the equipment getting smaller? Well, some parts of the equipment have definitely gotten smaller and more efficient, but we still need more of it just because of the more data usage that's going on. So even though components are getting smaller, we need more of it to address all the capacity needs. We continue to always upgrade, small cells are one part of that upgrade that we're talking about, and, and it, it actually will work to densify the network, so small cells connect back to an existing, existing macro cell site, most of the time on our network, they connect back to a macro cell. They actually re-propagate the signal on the mac, on the macro site, they re-propagate it, so it actually bolsters the capability of that existing site for capacity. So there's already coverage anyway, it just improves capacity, which helps people with their download speeds, but also helps them have improved voice coverage as well. As the other carriers did, we took a look at the proposed code, we have submitted a letter as well, and I'll just outline a few of our comments and concerns, I, and I'm definitely here to answer any questions. We agree with the concern about, about prohibiting equipment on certain streets. I am familiar with the Redmond Code, and they did propose prohibitions on some of their downside, downtown streets, but they haven't passed it yet, and we have been working with them to come up with design solutions and criteria that would allow us on certain streets to make sure that we keep the integrity of the look of the downtown area. So we, we would love the opportunity to work with Isqwa on, on that type of solution, or, and we have other options, I mean, we would be happy to offer some options. We did notice, because this is replacing the wireless code. We did notice, because this is replacing the wireless code, it looks like there is a new prohibition on macro cell sites in neighborhoods, our residential zones. Not that we're building a lot of new sites, but as I mentioned earlier, more people are relying on their wireless phones at home. So we do want to make sure that there are some options, I mean, like maybe rooftops or, you know, some acceptable options for those zones. Another item we noticed was about replacement poles. We seem to see some missing language there. Sometimes we do need to replace poles for various reasons, including the owner asks us to, and it's maybe structural issues, where we want to make sure that we have that language in there. There's some analysis language that we have concerns with. We don't mind providing analysis, as long as it's something we can do and that's helpful. So we would like to give some input on, you know, when we need, when we agree that we need to prove something versus when, you know, when it can't really prove we need capacity, for example. So we'd like to give some input there. And then there's some procedural requirements that seem a little extra, what we're describing as more like extraordinary, and maybe put some expectations on staff to understand some things about network that they might not be able to understand. So we'd like to work on that language, make sure that those requirements are things that we, you know, that the staff has capability to have information on to process. So I think there was also some mention about some of the other cities. There are some other cities that we have worked with recently. We'd be happy to help you with that. But Kirkland, Mokatiel, Spokane are some examples of codes that have passed. And I think I have covered everything that's on my list. So I'm happy to answer questions, and I thank you again very, very much. AT&amp;T wants to participate in this process with you.
You have a question?
Yes.
Go for it.
When you were talking about the data requirements, is that the Level 2 review? Is that what you're referring to?
Some of the, we just wanted to apply to new poles and not to existing. That was part of our concern there.
Okay, but, okay. So it would be the new technology on an existing pole, your request is that it not need to go through a review?
No, I mean, no, this was about providing, this was about on a co-location situation. It said that the city would decide about co-location, and I think Linda was trying to explain how it is hard to determine when co-location works because of network requirements, and that was our concern, about the co-location requirement.
Right. Okay. I thought that that was a different concern. So when you were saying that there were data requirements, where does that appear?
Yes. There is a requirement for alternative analysis. And it was about, I think about, there was something about alternative analysis to prove that we need a site in a certain location. And it's real, it's hard to prove, to eliminate all possibilities, because when you look at the possibilities for siting, it could be rooftop, side of buildings, other poles. So we just want to make sure that we don't have to do that on existing poles that are already there anyway. We wouldn't mind doing it if we're asking to put in a new pole and proving that there's no alternative, but if the pole's already there, we didn't want to have to prove that the building next door couldn't work, and the pole this way and that way. It's just a lot of analysis.
And I had one other question with the replacement poles. Is that something that if you do, you said one reason that it would be replaced is at the owner's request? So is that something, then, that the company handles?
We pay for that, yes.
Payments?
We do.
Okay.
So when we, you're looking at adding equipment to a pole, you have to go back. Some of the poles are older, might not be structurally, you know, like look at structurally strength, and if it's necessary to replace it, we do that. We cover the cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to continue. Does anybody else want to make a comment? Yes?
I have to follow up just on Ms. Hunt's question.
You have to come to the microphone, though.
So just very briefly, in response to Ms. Hunt's question about the analysis, so in the macro facility siting criteria, there's a requirement that the provider makes some demonstrations about alternative sites and the need for the facility. And that, that's a fairly standard requirement for a macro facility. I think the biggest issue is having a requirement for that same type of alternatives analysis for a small cell. It doesn't make sense, because the small cells are deployed in groups, and they're designed to cover, you know, at most a block or two. And in selecting a particular pole, the things that are going to drive selecting a particular pole are not going to be the typical questions of, you know, a gap in coverage, or is there no other available location? It's going to be more, where can we best fit this into the landscape so it has the least impact, I think is probably going to be the driving factor. And so I would encourage moving away from the sort of macro site alternatives analysis information requirement for small cells, because it just doesn't, it doesn't fit what we're trying to do.
Okay. Is there a different sort of analysis that you would usually provide, then? Because it seems that some sort of information about how you're making the decision is, would be useful, maybe not exactly the same way as for a macro cell. So I'm wondering if there is another way to demonstrate how the decisions are made.
I guess I might point you to the communities that are establishing design criteria, so they're, because again, I think the, what's going to drive the decision about location is going to be, you know, is there, is it in the right location? And is it, does it fit the node pattern that we need to achieve? Is the structure that we want to put it on, is it going to be able to, either as it stands, be structurally sufficient, or when we replace it, you know, the same way, will it be structurally sufficient? And then, again, is it, is it amenable to incorporating the equipment in a way that minimizes aesthetic impact? So if you were looking for criteria, those are the ones that I would focus on rather than, you know, asking about coverage gaps.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions I can answer?
Well, some of the other presentations did talk about, for example, the coverage gaps that we would have on Front Street. So I was just, you know, thinking that there are, that is an aspect of the.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think all of us have emphasized that the purpose of a small cell is for capacity. And so capacity means the ability of the network to handle data. So the macro site provides the primary coverage for a geographic area, and the small cell communicates back to the macro facility to help manage and handle the amount of data demand that's flowing through that macro site. So, you know, when, if we're asked to prove a coverage need for a macro site, what we typically do is we will have drive test maps or propagation maps that show, you know, where in the network we actually have a hole in coverage. We don't have coverage there. We can't achieve in-building coverage in a particular place, and we can show that with colors on maps or drive test data. And that's because the small cell is for this data capacity transfer handling function. It's not really designed to provide primary coverage so much as it is to help that one macro site function better. So by allowing small cells, using small cells, you're going to increase the ability of the existing macro sites to handle the network traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
That's about the best I can do.
I think Victoria, only her comment was, the macro has a major, you know, you have to do major work and prove and do all your things to get a macro in, but there should be some kind of agenda, some kind of system to provide for a small cell. You know, it should be in there that this is the process that you have to go through, which could be minor, but since you have one for the macro, I think it's, I think Victoria was concerned that there was, you're just going to go and put it up anywhere and not have to do anything. And so there has to be some kind of, at least a minimum requirement of how it's.
How it should be designed and deployed.
Yeah, how it's going to be, what's your, you know, you go in and you ask for a permit, but what do you have to bring with a permit? What do you have to show?
Well, in some of the other communities that are looking at this issue, what they're asking for in an application packet are depictions of the type of the facility, the design of the facility, and drawings and other information that shows how it will be integrated into the support structure. You know, they want to know how many, how many individual small cells will there be in a particular node? Information like that, that goes to, again, those design criteria and aesthetic compatibility. So I don't, if.
I'm not asking you to give me the requirements. I'm just saying that in the code, we should have the steps that you have to go through.
Yeah.
And it could be, you know, minor. It's just that if you have something there to say, hey, you know, if you follow this, then you're good. That's all. That makes sense. And I assume that we're going to have a backup comment here.
Yes, thank you, Richard Bush, again. To answer the two questions that I think are pending at the end here. First, some jurisdictions locally are asking for carriers to consider different poles that are within a reasonable distance from the proposed pole. Because these are small cells and they are intended to cover one or two blocks, you can move it a little bit, but if you move it three blocks, it defeats the coverage objective. You can't provide the capacity, I'll clarify that. You can't provide the capacity where you need it. So in Mercer Island, there's a franchise agreement where the applicant is required to consider alternate poles within 100 feet of the proposed pole, and pick the one that's least intrusive on the community. So, and the things that we look at now are, is this pole in front of someone's living room window, kitchen window, or something like that? Or is it at a property line where it's not in anybody's direct line of sight? So those are the things that we do take into consideration. And the folks who are designing the networks now have enough experience to say, take the time and look. Yeah, this is a nice pole, but they turn around and say, oh, it's directly in somebody's living room window. There's another pole 75 feet down the street, whatever the number is, and it's not as obtrusive, so they should take the other pole. So in that franchise agreement, there is a request that you consider alternate poles that are within X number of feet. In Mercer Island, it's 100 feet. And choose the one that's the least intrusive. And then the safety valve is, if anyone expresses concern about that particular location to staff, then we have a dialogue about it and get it resolved. Okay? So that's one, I think that's what you're looking for, some way to provide information to staff to feel comfortable of the limited options there may be for small cells. This is the most reasonable one to choose.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. And that's a dialogue we want to have with staff. And then to answer your question about there being no coverage at all on Front Street, that's not what I'm, it's important that we're on the same page. The macro sites will provide coverage today. What we're looking to do is, like Linda said, provide capacity. And I'm sure you've been in a situation where you're trying to update the traffic map to see how things are going. You have five bars of coverage, four bars of coverage, but the wheel, oops, sorry, the wheel just keeps spinning and you don't get a data update. That's the problem we're trying to solve, where you have coverage, but there's just no throughput, excuse me, because everyone is trying to get through at the same time. So that's why we will have coverage on Front Street, but we're looking to add capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment? Hearing none. I'm going to continue the public hearing until hopefully February the 1st. And with that, since I'm not going to close it, we're just going to go into discussion with Keith and some questions that I think we both have, so.
Sure. So do you want to lead, or do you want me to start?
You know, I read what the city wrote, and I've read all of the comments that the carriers wrote. And to me, they're reasonable. But what I want from you is, are they reasonable for the city, and do they go along with it? And which ones are, you know, of value, and which ones can't the city abide with?
Sure. So, you know, why don't I just start by going through some of the concerns raised this evening, and we can talk about those. And I don't think we have to talk them into the ground. We can dial up a conversation, and then there can be potentially a week of back and forth between staff and the providers. So I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with Front Street. We had a lot of conversation about Front Street being a dead zone. And, you know, so here's the deal, and it's, I'm dialing it up simply as a conversation. So here's the lamppost on Front Street, so it's streetlight, right? And this thing is, I haven't measured it. I'm going to say it's between 15 and 18 feet tall. What you didn't hear from them is, most of them know the vertical spacing that they want, they're small cells, and they're generally, and you can, we can have a dialogue about this later if I'm wrong, but I believe they're generally between like 30 and 45 feet. And so part of that is, okay, so think about it. I've got 18, 30 to 45. So they're either going to want to put an extension on top of this pole, or they're going to change this pole for one that's giant. Okay? So this pole's at a certain height because it's pedestrian-oriented. And trying to, and one of the reasons why we precluded or suggested at this point prohibiting using the right-of-way for Front Street is because you can't use these poles. And because our streetscape on Front Street is already being used for either trees or outdoor seating or walkways, having the additional poles in Front Street did not seem like it was something we wanted. Now, does that mean there cannot be antennas on Front Street? No. They can be structure-mounted or roof-mounted. So it takes a huge landscape away from the carriers. They cannot work with the city. They have to work with the property owners to get those mounted on those buildings. And, you know, I'm, that's a different, that's harder, right? And so I understand why they don't want that, but that's harder. But it's about, it's a character issue for us as a community, and, you know, having a bunch of antennas on Front Street seems like that's not in keeping with the vision we have for our old town. Gilman's a little harder, so that's, I think there's more room for conversation on Gilman. So here's, here's a lamppost on Gilman. Obviously, this one's tall. I don't know if this one went in with Atlas, but it's pretty tall. So, you know, there could be, there could be an antenna maybe on that pole. Maybe there's even room for two, I don't know. So why not Gilman? So as we talked about those two streets, those two streets are, I think, what we consider our signature streets in town, Front and Gilman. So generally, the proliferation of antenna on Gilman did not seem like that was an image that most folks had when we had this conversation. So, you know, I think there, I think even though we suggested prohibiting both. So, you know, I think there, I think even though we suggested prohibiting both, for me, this one's really hard. I can't, I'm having a real hard time seeing a bunch of antennas on Front Street. This one, this one, there's probably a little bit more room for some conversation. The city-owned poles, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and be candid. Our Public Works Operations Department said no. They said they do not want private antenna and electrical equipment on something they have to service. So what does that mean? That means that if it's a PSE pole, which these guys are, you know, they can go ahead and they can put their antenna up on top. And one of the things, and this is another policy piece for you guys, I think this is ugly. Some people, maybe the person who lives on Squawk loves this wooden pole with the cobra head scabbed onto the side of it. I mean, if you put an antenna up here, I'm not sure aesthetically that makes a big difference for me. Now, Vicky, you live on Squawk. You might say, yes, that's a beautiful pole and putting an antenna on top, we really need to talk about the aesthetics of that. This is why we're going to have this conversation. I would say for that pole, you know, let them put it up there and generally make it match the color, but I don't know that we want to put a whole lot of design requirements. I don't think we're trying to do this code to penalize them. I think we're trying to figure out what's really important to us. Let the rest of it go, because I don't want to make more work for myself and my staff than I otherwise need to. But, you know, there's a big difference for me on the aesthetic of these things, which I think are more county remnants than they are necessarily something we chose, versus some things like this, this, and this. You know, what we don't know is, how many poles? I mean, you guys kind of started to get to that. You know, there's, depending on what you're reading, there's some variance in literature on, it's every 300 feet, it's every 500 feet. Gentlemen talked about blocks. Well, block dimensions change. Blocks in Portland are like 260 feet. Blocks in Isiqua are much bigger than that. You know, so there is a certain horizontal spacing that these will come to. And as best as I can tell, it's somewhere between 300 and 500 feet. And what we've written in here about co-location is, you know, part of this is, if you, you know, if you drink the Kool-Aid and go along with the program, what we're saying is, we don't want your antennas on our poles. So those poles that go in the right-of-way will be owned by a carrier. And what we're saying is that we want to have a conversation about co-location. And if it's possible, we're wanting that pole to be constructed so it could be co-located. But we're saying we want them to assign that co-location right to the city so that, let's say it's a Verizon pole, and AT&amp;T comes in and they've got a desire to put an antenna in a similar location, we don't want the situation to be that Verizon tells AT&amp;T you can't be on our pole. So if we have the right, then we can give that right or assign that right to AT&amp;T to ensure that co-location happens in those locations. So, but that's a trade-off. If you co-locate, those poles are taller than they are if they're single user, because there's a certain vertical separation, as far as I understand, that those antennas require. And so it's, there's some trade-offs here for us in terms of the number of poles, the height of the poles. You know, generally, my take is, and the reason why there is one figure that's in the proposed code, is, you know, I think that if we are building new poles, or if new poles are being built in the right-of-way, they should be as unattractive as possible. So this is just a very standard pole. I think Mr. Bush was talking about, the equipment can be put on the base, so that base there would potentially house the electric box that would go with it. But in other cases, those boxes could be in different places. So, I don't know. I mean, so what else questions do you have? Replacement poles? You know, I'll relook at the code and see what it says about the replacement poles. I think there absolutely should be an ability to replace a pole that needs replacing without sending it through a process. I actually think we called it a Level Zero, but I'd go back and I'll check that. You know, in terms of fees, that's not your purview. We did include it here so that they could talk about that. That would be a conversation with the council when it comes through. Our department is intended to be 100% cost recovery. And so because we don't know how much time these permits are going to take, this is the best guess at this point. And the best thing I can offer you guys is that when we figure out how long it actually takes staff to do this, if we need to process a fee adjustment, we will do that as quickly as possible. Vicky, did you have a question or comment?
Maybe I'll just wait until you...
Until I just run out of steam?
I shall be.
That's soon, actually. So from a policy standpoint, you know, there's, there's, these are kind of like the big things for me that I thought you guys might want to talk about. So the encouraged, discouraged, and prohibited boxes. So Joan, you asked earlier, did we look at some other codes? Yes, we did. So this is, we're a little bit different in that a lot of the other cities chose a hierarchical scheme. In other words, like, this is what we really want. If you can't do this, then you can do this. And if you can't do this, then do this. And, you know, as I thought about that and thought about, well, gee, what do I put first? And does first in Old Town equal first in Isiqua Highlands? And it seemed like, for me, that was a precarious way for us to go, since our neighborhoods have very different characters. And so rather than create these hierarchies of preferred locations, you know, it seemed easier just to create an encouraged box and a discouraged box and a prohibited box. And as long as you were somewhere in that box, one isn't more important than the other. So even though the draft has numbers, those aren't intended to suggest hierarchy. And one of the red lines I have already made is to just get rid of the numbers. So, you know, but that's something we can talk about. If you wanted, if the commission felt like that was not where we wanted to go and we wanted to actually create a hierarchy, that's a level of complexity that we could do. It seems like that would take quite a bit of public conversation, which, if you felt strongly about, we could do. As I mentioned earlier, so small cell max pole height, 45 feet. I do believe that could accommodate two antennas vertically. If you decided that's too tall, then, you know, we can reduce the height, but then we probably can't get two antennas on it. And then the macro tower's at 85 feet. Then there's a whole section on ground equipment screening. So if, you know, so mostly because, as you heard, they're really trying to deal with mobile users, which are on our, in our right-of-way, that's the preferred location, putting a bunch of boxes. So if they're on the pole, that's, that's okay, but there's an aesthetic issue to putting them on the pole. And so if you run them down to the ground, now you have a bunch of things on the ground. And if you have two antennas potentially on the same pole, you've got two boxes that you have to cite on the ground. You know, there's, there's advantages to putting them in vaults, you know? As you heard, there's disadvantages to the carriers to put them in vaults. You can make them look like benches. You can make them look like kiosks. But, you know, do you want to have four benches all in the same place? You know, so all of these things are things we need to talk about, you know? But they're all part of this infrastructure that is coming and that we want in our community. And it's a trade-off. And the question is, is, you know, how do you, how do you allow it in, but yet retain some of the aesthetics that I think our community is known for? I mean, you know, you can talk about sign codes. And Isiqua's sign code is regionally known as one of the most stringent sign codes. And we have super small signs. And part of it is because our community has said, we want the right-of-way to be uncluttered. We want, you know, those vistas down the streetscape to be things of beauty and not full of things like signs and potentially antennas. So, so this is, this is all important stuff in terms of aesthetics for our community. And with that, I'm going to stop now. So...
I'm just trying to see if we've covered most of the comments.
So, and just so that I can let you know how we'll handle the letters we got today. I think they all came in today. I don't know. My life's a blur. So what we'll do is, we'll read through those comments, and we will provide responses back to the carriers. And unfortunately, I'm going to be in Las Vegas starting Saturday. So we're going to have to do that through email. I'm not sure we're going to get any FaceTime before the next commission meeting, if it's the first. But it doesn't mean I won't have the ability to correspond back and forth. So hopefully, and y'all know Ogden Murphy Wallace, so they're handling a lot of the kind of translation for us. And in terms of, yeah, I'm going to blame something on them, but I won't. So I think, so we will do some of that to try and get ourselves on the same page before we come back next time. But then you guys will get copies of kind of that back and forth, so you can see where those conversations are going.
So not being a wireless expert, when I read things, they seem reasonable. And then when T-Mobile and Verizon gave the comments, you know, they seem reasonable too. And I like the fact that the city's input of exactly why, you know, that was great, let's put it on Front Street, but then, then I don't, I like the posts we have there. It's going to be very difficult to incorporate them into that. So, so you look at this as a different light. And so I was going to suggest that you do exactly what you just did. And I know that I can go back now and compare them a little bit more reasonably than I did before. So I think I will be prepared on the first, so I'm going to make sure that the other seven members of this commission are updated also. And I think we've learned a lot through the presentations here tonight. And it does come down to the fact that we all want to be connected. We all want, you know, immediate responses on our phone. And to get that, we're going to have to give up some, we're going to have to put some poles in. We're going to have to provide the communication. So we know that. And I appreciated the several comments that you made, that you wanted to work together with the city. And that's the first step in anything, is to know that you're on the same path. And we'll see what we can do. And hopefully, we can find a way to get small cell stuff in, on Front Street, in that area, in Gilman. I can sit on Gilman, but I, like you, I'm having a hard time on Front Street when you look at what we, as a city, really want. And that's our heart of our town, and that's kind of what we've all wanted. So I don't have anything else to say. Do you, Victoria?
Well, I think that I also appreciated the presentations and the information that was presented and have learned a lot. I think it's complicated because these are fast-evolving technology, and the equipment will look different in a few years. And additionally, the devices that will be connected by the equipment will look different, you know, 10, 20 years from now. I know that the more automated vehicles, as was mentioned, that will be using this technology, and that's kind of a ways out. But I think it's, it's interesting to think about all of that, and I think that one...
Hey, we have a quorum! Oh, wait, no, we don't.
So I think that one thing that is important to take into consideration is that probably this technology will look different. I think that you mentioned about putting this technology in benches. So maybe down the line, there will be a more aesthetically pleasing option that could fit more into the character of some of these places. But I also have a hard time imagining anything on the light posts on Front Street, because it's so iconic in a historic district. And so I think that's sort of forward thinking, that at this point, we can't imagine this technology on those particular light posts. So I would agree with that. I noticed that in the, in some of the letters, there was concern about the complications of putting, of co-locating, that it's complicated where you can co-late different technologies on the pole and that, and so I guess that's just something that seems very technical, but is a consideration. And, let's see. Oh, and then I also had one really minor, but I think important, comment on the code about obsolescence and removal. So this is a fast-paced field, and I imagine that things will become obsolete quickly and will have to be removed. And so I had some questions on that about who decides when it's obsolete, who decides when it needs to be updated, and, and not only the pole, but the technology that's on the pole. And then there's also this, if there's a danger to public safety that the network provider shall promptly remove. And everywhere else it says, you know, if there's graffiti, it will be 14 calendar days. It's very specific. And then I noticed that that was promptly. So I thought, I thought that that might be one thing to consider, is to make that specific, like the other bullet points. Because if it's a danger to public safety, definitely we want to define promptly, you know, immediately, and what that means. Thank you.
So in essence, don't take this wrong, but I think we have to think out of the box. So welcome to the last few minutes of the Planning Policy Commission. We've gone through the public hearing and the presentation from the city, and I don't think we're going to start all over again. But is there any burning question that you have that you don't think would have been covered by the city's explanation of this? Okay.
So Ron, obviously, we don't have a quorum. So the idea is we're keeping the public hearing open, and we're going to continue it to next week. I'm going to fly back from wherever I am...
...the first.
And be here for the continuation on the first, assuming we can get a quorum on the first. And that's the only unknown at this point. So it's all been taped, so you can watch the testimony from the providers. And if you have any questions, I already got, we already got some questions from AJ. So if any of you have questions, feel free, and either any of the other commission members that might watch this on tape, feel free to email before the first. That would be helpful. We can definitely have some, you know, at least provide some clarity for the presentation next time based on your questions.
I think that's positive. I think that's what we're going to do. Anything else you want to contribute?
We'll see you tomorrow for Transit Oriented Development and District Visions, Part 26.
All right. Hopefully, we will have a quorum tomorrow.
Yes, there's lots more coming tomorrow night, because it's Thursday.
So unless you have anything else, I want to thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
I learned a lot, and I hope we can work together to make our city connected. So with that, I'm going to close the public, I'm going to close the meeting at 8:05.